Anyone else on the commission have an opinion of what the minutes say?
I noticed it looked like the commissioners who were listed as absent are also listed as present.
I miss that, but we can check on that.
I will. I'll check on that.
Great. Any other observations? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion items are next. We have two sewage facilities planning modules. That requires a signature from the chair. Steve, is there any more that has to be said about Eagle Road and St. Honoray?
Mr. Chairman, these are really perfunctory when it comes to the planning commission, right? It's just part of the process.
So I've already signed those, so I guess we can move on from that. Unless there's public comment.
Yeah, Matt. Matt, Peter over here.
Yes.
Yeah, you, even though they are perfunctory, the planning commission does need to take a vote to authorize you to sign them. Okay.
Prior to that, though, if there's any public comment, I don't see any.
So I'd make a motion to approve 1001, 1,001 Eagle Road Sewer Module.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the sewage facility planning module for Honoray. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, application for Villanova University parking garage. Just as a reminder to everybody, the last time Villanova parking garage was before us, was before that, prior to them going to zoning hearing board. They had dropped their request for a variance on height when they went to the zoning hearing board. They were before Shade Tree, at the last Shade Tree Commission meeting. We were happy with their presentation planning plan. We approved, the Shade Tree Commission approved the project with a contingent that Villanova would supply, the Shade Tree Commission, with some of the details that we needed as per tree removal and tree replacement that they hadn't figured out yet. So, given Villanova's planning expertise, we approved that plan. So now, hi, Nick.
Matt, you took away half of my opening.
Well, I just wanted to make sure because I'm on Shade Tree.
Now, everything's accurate that what you said. The board had seen this plan before we went to zoning hearing board. Based on the feedback from this board and neighbors meetings, we did drop a level off the parking structure so that we did not need a variance on the height requirement. We did receive three variances. One was dimensional with the setback between the parking structure and the Amtrak property line. But that did not increase in existing nonconformity. Also received relief on the setback from Eithon Avenue, North Eithon Avenue. But again, that did not increase existing nonconformity of the old parking structure. And we also received relief on the size of the parking spaces within the parking structure, which were consistent with all the other parking spaces throughout campus in the parking structures. As you mentioned, we proceeded the zoning hearing board. We received approval. We received relief on those three setbacks. After the zoning hearing board, we did have a meeting, in live person meeting with neighbors, at which time this project, in addition to other projects throughout campus, were discussed. Received the Shade Tree approval. We are requesting two waivers that are pretty commonly requested before this board. One being indicating manmade structures within 500 feet of the property line. We do have an aerial showing that. And the other one being requesting a preliminary final plan approval for this plan, rather than proceeding with preliminary and then final. So those are waivers we requested. I can go through the, since I believe the board is familiar with the plan, I can go through the review letters, or we can give you a presentation on basically the plan itself.
I mean, from what I saw on the plans, it looked like the footprint was, is larger. It takes a pumping house into, out of play. And, right, it just, the footprint covers that now, that space. But that wasn't a setback issue.
Right.
And the height is the same height, or it's the same or less in the buildings surrounding it.
Yes.
In terms of like the, a presentation, I don't personally need a presentation on this, but if the rest of the board disagrees, we could do that. Okay.
Sorry about this. Can I take, where's?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna.
Are we okay?
Hopefully. Sorry. Matt, you took some of, some of our presentation. You've already done it for us. Alright. I thought there would just be an HDMI cable up here. Sorry about that. So it's kinda gonna be awkward on TV. People are watching us, not doing anything. Thanks.
Plans actually, are you plans on the agenda?
Yeah, but we're doing this, not the plan. Great. Hello, I'm Mary Lou Smith from Villanova University. And tonight, we're gonna go through the new parking garage on Eithon Avenue, right adjacent to our main entrance. As some of you may be aware, we have an existing garage there that is in need of being replaced, and we are replacing with this garage here. Let me just start with the... This is actually the rendering of the new garage. And what you're seeing from this view is off of Lancaster Avenue. I'm sorry, thank you. Eithon Avenue. So this is as you pass the HSB building. This is the next building down before you get to the train tracks. We wanted to share with you the public meetings that we have attended in reference to this new garage. We've been in front of planning commission for zoning. We held virtual meetings to discuss the plans of this in February. And then we appeared in front of the zoning hearing board in February as well. And then in May, we met with our neighbors at the Mullen Center. And I believe MJ was in attendance at that meeting with us. And just recently, we went through Shade Tree and got that, got through that. Here's where the existing garage is right now. You see that footprint. And the new garage is, the blue is overlaying the existing garage. So you can kind of see that it's, it may be a larger footprint in some areas, but less, we're trying to maintain more of the, the green area so that it's more attractive on Eithon Avenue. Here's the existing garage. It's a one-story garage, ground level and a second level. And it was actually built 20-some years ago with the anticipation that we will put another level on it. But we have decided that it wasn't worth putting another level on this garage. And this is the footprint of the proposed structure. As you can see, the Health Services Building is to the south of that. No, I was just saying if my, the pointer would work. So you can see Health Services Building, and there is a new entrance. It's actually the same entrance off of our main gate. But we will be rerouting that a bit to, to go to the front of this garage. There's two driveways into this garage. One is for an ambulance. We're going to park our ambulance in the smaller driveway area. And the larger area is for the parking, for people to enter to park. And this is the entrance off our main, this is off campus. So if you were to look at that driveway, right past the main gate, you make a right. I wish I had a pointer to show you that, but that's what this... This is right here. So you see, there's two entrances there, the one to the left where two people are. That will be kind of where our VEMS group will stay to be ready for any emergency. And then this is an elevation of the garage and how it's gonna be stone. There'll be glass in the tower. One of the big mistakes we made the first time was not enclosing our stair towers, and it really deteriorated as a result. So we are enclosing this tower. And these are just the light fixtures on the garage to show you that, you know, we had the possibility of putting larger, higher fixtures on, but we chose to put fixtures that are 11 feet high to reduce any spread or light pollution. And on the perimeters of the garage, we will have lighting below the parapet to try to minimize any light spill. And then these are the waiver requests that Nick was talking about. For the, we were looking for requests for preliminary final plan instead of a separate plan approval, and a waiver for the 500-feet area around our site because most of that area is, is our property anyway. And that's the short presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. Matt, how, how does this new design reflect the input that you receive from residents?
So the residents really did not want us to go up to five stories. I think we were, and so we, we reduced that. We, we made it so that it, it met the code. We're below 38 feet.
What's the current size of the garage? How many spaces right now?
Presently, we have 175 spaces, and this will be 299.
299.
So by adding another level, we got more spaces, which was ultimately what we wanted to do when we first built our garage 20 years ago.
Are you concerned about like the amount of traffic that's kind of going through that section of, of your campus, not only on Eithon, and as well as when you go through the, underneath the train tracks right there, where it becomes?
We're not concerned. We've actually done a traffic study, and it resulted in not, not being an impact to the roads. In addition, the way we have our, our parking throughout campus, we assign parking. So people come, they stay, you know, they go in the middle of the day, at the end of the day. It's not like, you know, okay, school's out at 3 o'clock, everyone leaves at the same time. So there is really alternative times that people are coming and going. And then when it comes to event parking, people will park in this HSB garage. But we have worked very well with Radnor Police Officers and trying to, you know, exit different areas. So they'll come into that main area, but then they'll take, they'll go through campus to go out Spring Mill Road to reduce the traffic during an event.
And will there also be parking on the top deck as well, or will that be just roof?
No, there'll be parking on the top deck.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be, I have one follow-up question, Matt. How is this impacted by the recent news regarding Cabrini? And the absorption of merger? Are there synergies there? They have a parking garage there as well?
They do, but that is not impacting this garage. We have a great need to replace this garage now. And we just think it's prudent to put the additional level on for future projects that we may have, or just to have the convenience of having parking near some of our events.
Okay.
Thanks.
Can I ask one more, one more follow-up question? With, with regards to the construction and the means to construction, what type of ESG thoughts are going into it? Assuming you're gonna be using all LED lights, the building?
Absolutely.
Anything, any solar panels you're gonna be putting up, or?
We're looking into that, but I'm not so sure what we'll be able to accomplish with the solar panels. We'll be doing lots of stormwater management, LED lights. And we're putting in charging stations for, for cars, for electric vehicles.
How many, how many do you plan on doing?
This is pretty preliminary right now, David.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're very conscious of that because we have a great deal of people on campus that are interested in that. And so for us, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer in a new build to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
You said that at one point, you could have put the third floor on this garage, but decided not to do it. What would the height have been on this particular garage with the third floor on it versus the four floors that we're about to look at, looking at?
Skip, I believe that the existing garage is at... I think it's at 14 feet, so you figure it would be another eight to 10 feet if we went up another level. But the, the code does allow us to go up to 38 feet, and we're just shy of 38 feet. So we're just trying to...
We're just curious.
Yeah. What, it's an odd-shaped garage, so it really is very inefficient to go up another level. That's another reason that, you know, it's, it's a steel garage, which is not really very conducive to the weather. And, and because it's an odd shape, if you go up another level, we really don't maximize the footprint, and it's kind of this big bulky garage on our campus.
Any other commissioner comment before I ask for public comment? Seeing no public comment, I'd like to make a motion to approve preliminary final on this proposal. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next up is 14 Farriston Land Development Plan. Just to give you guys some perspective, this project was tabled by the Shade Tree Commission at the last Shade Tree Commission meeting. The problem that we saw was there are several heritage trees, including a 55-inch oak tree that are healthy, that were being removed. And in the conversation with the landscape designer, he couldn't give us a solid answer about whether the plan could change to save the trees. And the trees are deemed in good condition. So it seemed to us that it would, this was something that we just didn't want to pursue, continue to pursue at that point. And knowing that it was coming before planning, whatever issues planning might have, might coincide with issues that we had. The, I don't know if the applicant has dealt with that in terms of reviewing what Shade Tree said. The landscape architect who was representing you guys couldn't give us an answer about whether that would happen. So that's just my little preamble. But they're asking for preliminary final tonight. And I personally would not, I would not want to do that given that Shade Tree's still hanging fire on this. I don't want to like step on Shade Tree's toes. But that said, we were gonna hear the presentation, and you can proceed.
Just trying to get here, get a little bit bigger here.
Ian, you're working hard tonight.
I think it's a little slow. Are you making it a little bit bigger?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening. Justin Brewer with Howell Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant, Valley Forge Military Academy. As was mentioned before, we're here for subdividing these two lots off and creating two single-family residential dwellings. The one lot to the east was an existing building that has been demolished, and a new dwelling is being constructed there currently. So we're going to create a, essentially a second lot here. So two total lots for the academy to build another single-family dwelling on the newly created lot. So I know the, you had mentioned Shade Tree Commission, they were in here last, last week, I believe. Our landscape architect has had some conversations with Mr. Hosbach, Township Arborist, in discussing the condition of the, the 55-inch oak. And, and his response after going out on-site and looking at it is that it, it is not in good shape, and viability of it is, is not really there. So we, we are going to prepare the requested plan from the Shade Tree Commission planting plan and showing the trees to be removed and everything. And of course, go back to the Shade Tree Commission to, to discuss any of those changes. So this is, this is the plan. We've received our consultant review letters, gone through those. I didn't see anything too, too crazy on there that we couldn't comply with. I know there were some comments, I think we discussed with the planning commission here tonight, regarding road widening and curbs and sidewalks being requested for both Radnor Road and Farriston Road. So I guess we'd be looking for some, some opinions from the planning commission as far as we were thinking of requesting the waiver for those, being as that there's no sidewalk along Farriston and any of the other properties. It's currently a pathway along Radnor Road, parallel, paralleling Radnor Road. So there is that walkability there. So that was, that was, I know what I was, I appreciate your forwardness about not making the recommendation this evening, but would like to have some feedback from the planning commission tonight on, on those.
Sure. I, I mean, I, in terms of sidewalks, curbs, I, I think in my time on this commission, we were sort of leaning toward, it's a good idea at the beginning to do that because, you know, folks move into a new house or a new, or a new neighborhood, and they're like, they want that. A lot of people really want that. So I think it, it makes sense to actually try to make that happen. Like, so I would say that from my perspective, and the engineer can speak for himself, but I, I think sidewalks are crucial in, in this type of development. And curbs as well. So, but that's just my thought. I, I would say too, that the Shade Tree Commission will need to hear from John Hosbach about the conditions before they make a decision to approve. So I, I still, I still feel very strong about the, sort of the idea that we, tonight, we leave the Shade Tree Commission in play. So...
Okay.
So basically, can you, can you walk us a bit through the, this was one lot, right?
It's, it's all part of the Valley Forge Military Academy campus. So it's, in researching the deeds as well, there was... This was originally when all these Farriston lots were subdivided back in, I can't even recall the, the date, a while ago. This was actually, these were two lots. And at some point, they, they were consolidated, whether that was by the Military Academy or someone else. It's not, wasn't fully clear how that went through. And even if you look on the county for quarters mapping, they have the line, a line there between the two, but it's zed out, as we call it.
Is that, does that explain why it was confusing to me? Like, to others too, I think, just looking at the plans, it wasn't as straightforward as sometimes we see plans. So...
As far as?
As the definition of each lot, or what was on each lot, or was there encroachment on another piece of property? Or there was one aspect where it looked like there was something from another piece of property on this lot?
So there is, up in this location, there is a...
Could you, I don't mean to interrupt, but there's an existing conditions plan which shows that, which would be a lot nicer. And that's what was confusing. The Google Earth picture was of the previous house that was demolished, which doesn't match the house that's being built now. So it was a little confusing. But yeah, if you could get into detail on how, on what's gonna happen with that and how.
Okay. I'm trying to get back up there. So this existing building, and I have, Luke, I don't know if you have some information on that building. It's over the, I know we talked about that, that that's also to be demolished. Okay. So that's, that's a building that is owned by the Military Academy that's currently across the municipal boundary. And as part of this, that's also to be demolished.
It's the entire building? It's not just the portion on the proposed lot? And, and do we have something from the Military Academy that says they're going to do that?
I can, I can get some...
Only because it's pretty tough to approve this plan with a building sticking on it from another property in another county.
Sure. I mean, we, I can work with, definitely work with the Military Academy to get, get that in writing from them that that is to be...
A demolition permit would be good, too.
Absolutely.
Which, which of those two dashed lines is the county, I'm assuming one of those two is the county line?
It, it follows the rear property line.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. And so what's reflected on this existing conditions plan is, is the building footprint that has, that is currently under construction now. So the Military Academy came in with a demolition permit to demo that existing building that was on this corner here, and then build this new dwelling, which is obviously to remain.
You're not showing us a new dwelling. That's the existing?
That's, yes. This is the existing conditions plan. So if I go to, this plan here shows that existing building that's currently under construction. And then the new dwelling that would be constructed on the newly created lot.
It's gonna be adjacent to it, as you're showing right now?
Yes.
What's, again, what's the purpose of the residential?
So the building on the corner is going to be, I think the title, I'm using the correct title for it. The president of the Military Academy is currently on another building that is to be, needs, needs some work done to it. So they're moving his residence to this lot on the corner. And then the, the other lot, Valley Forge Military Academy is gonna retain ownership of it at the time and determine if they need it for their, and then somebody within the administration or possibly sell it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to be very clear, the, the building on the right that's light colored?
Yes.
Is demolished?
No, no, there was, it, we're showing it as the existing on this plan because the Military...
By existing, though, you mean under construction? By existing though, you mean under construction?
Under construction, yes. It wasn't proposed, the building on the left is shown as proposed because it's proposed construction as part of this application. They, we're showing it as existing, the one on the right is existing because it was permitted to be constructed under a previous application for just a demo and grading permit.
Okay, when was that permitted?
I believe it was last year.
And was the subdivision plan submitted at the time of permitting?
It was not, no.
The path slash sidewalk, so the existing sidewalk is pretty narrow, correct?
Along Radnor Road?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes.
So, the township constructed just south of that, I guess it's south, it shows in the Google Earth, you know, a four-foot sidewalk, so just from, yeah, if you go down, okay, you can see it there. So, the one that was existing for that, what, the previous existing home, which is not the current existing home, my recommendation from a staff level is we would like to see a four-foot sidewalk continued up along there, it adds continuity to what was just built, and also on the adjacent side road. Curbing isn't as much as an issue, but I think the sidewalk is, and if the curbing helps you as far as placement closer to the road, fine, if you want to go back further, that's fine too. But, the staff recommendation to the planning commission is that the sidewalk should be installed per the ordinance.
May I ask about the road widening as well, as far as staff's opinion?
So, from a staff standpoint, we're fine with the existing road width as it stands, I don't see that changing. Sidewalks, we do, you know, as homes are addressed going down the road, you know, over time, there may be connectivity. But at least we'll have connectivity on Radnor Street Road for sure, that's right off the bat.
Excuse me, Steve, there were two recommendations about road width, one was cartway expansion and the other was right-of-way expansion. Are you saying that you're not that concerned about either one or just the one?
That's correct, Mr. Kunde. There, if the board of commissioners feels a need for additional right-of-way, they can request it, and also road widening. But Ferriston Road, it's a pretty quiet road, well-established, I don't see that widening, you know, as, in its totality anytime soon. But the sidewalks, I think, are important on Ferriston and Radnor Street.
And I think it was this plan, but our engineers talked about something about fee and lieu on the sidewalk, but you're suggesting that staff really wants a sidewalk.
Yeah, if you're going to put the sidewalk, then you would not do that. That would be, only if the sidewalk is not being put in, that could be considered by the board.
Go ahead, David.
I was going to say, at this time, is there a need for crosswalk across Radnor going entering into Valley Forge Military Academy? It's like more a question for staff.
So, that would be on Ferriston?
So, this would be going across, you're saying, across Ferriston?
Across Radnor.
Or Radnor Chester?
Yeah. No, across Radnor.
Sorry, Radnor Road.
There is one?
Yeah, exactly. There's two lines that are connected to the street.
Okay.
The only place that may be needed is on Ferriston to connect the existing sidewalk to the proposed sidewalk, so that would be a reasonable request to do, and we would request it be the continental style.
So, what I'm thinking is, or what I'm hearing is that, I think this commission would appreciate it if you, if all the issues that we brought up tonight were cleaned up, like the labeling, the, just to make it, because you can see that some commissioners, including myself, just didn't understand completely what was going on here.
I apologize for that.
No, I'm just saying that, to ask for preliminary or final approval, just, it has to be cleaned up. And then with the sidewalk issue cleaned up and any other, Roger, I mean, I'm sorry, Damon and Tim, if you guys, do you see any other issues that you had that think should be addressed before a general cleanup of the plans?
I did not see any other issues.
I didn't either, it was mainly just cleanup details for stormwater, just consistency amongst the plan drawings and the report.
And then that coincides with you coming back before Shade Tree anyway, so, so I would...
Matt, what about the accessory, the structure that borders between the county lines?
Oh, getting something from Valley Forge, yes, yeah. We'll work on that as well.
Okay.
So, I guess my suggestion would be that we table this until the next meeting.
All right.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
We'll see you next time.
Do we have public comment?
Sorry. Yep, please.
I live at 18 Ferriston, just to the left.
And your name?
Michael Britton. Chime in. Another neighbor, I can go first. So, I actually live not next to the president's house that's being rebuilt, not the subdivision, I guess, I'm next to the subdivided lot in between that's being built. And had a few concerns, one being I attended the Shade Tree Commission last, two weeks ago, and there was mention of nine trees being taken down, and there's been concern amongst the neighbors around the tree or the rainwater runoff. The rest of the street is actually, that's the highest part of the street, and it's like a U-shaped street. Matt lives on the low side of that runoff, and there was a pond.
Matt Stefano, I live kind of on the bend of the U that is Ferriston, I'm kind of the low point there on like, kind of, I guess it would be opposite corner from where this house is. But I, you know, my concern is the stormwater runoff, and you know, if I pull up the document that you guys have for your stormwater plan, it says, on page one, the section 111 says, "All runoff from the site will make its way to the stormwater system on Ferriston Road", which eventually makes its way to Radnor Road. But, there is no stormwater system on Ferriston Road. We don't have storm drains, it's basically a set of privately installed and maintained recharge basins in all of our properties. And so, taking all of this extra impervious water with this big rounded driveway, you know, the tree removals, it's a big concern for us. And, you know, a couple times a year, I have to, you know, to get it out to Radnor Road, this stormwater plan is, you know, to run it down Ferriston Road, it just ends up in my yard, and then to get it to Radnor Road where you want it to go, I throw a pump into the lake that is my yard and then hose it out to Radnor Road. And I've had to replace my basement flooring twice, I have a French drain, I have two sump pumps, and you know, I've emailed with Steve about this, and, you know, if we're going to keep adding more properties on the high ground, that's going to flood my property, I think we need to do something about this as far as public sewer or storm drain, because it's, I, we're doing everything we can as residents and we're kind of out of options here.
Well, one of the previous applicants for a sewer module is Holloway Project, St. Honoré, he's, they're holding their stormwater on their property. So, that's a consideration for the applicant.
I see, you know, there is a recharge basin there, but it's at the highest point on the property uphill from where all the stormwater is going, so it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You know, all that driveway runoff is not getting caught by that, it's going to end up on my yard. So, you know, I think that that needs to be a consideration, and if we add a sidewalk that's, you know, extra impervious, it's not a lot, but it's, you know, if you see my yard a few times a year, it's pretty staggering. I was out there, I got home from my shift last night at 11:30, and, you know, I had to be outside in my boots, put on my boots, threw the pump out, and, you know, my, the water was up against my house, it was three and a half feet deep. And, you know, we've all put in thousands of dollars of extra recharge basins in our yard because there's simply nothing else that we can do. So, you know, it's a concern of mine and my neighbors, and, you know, I know Steve's gotten a lot of emails about this from myself and Craig Church, and, you know, it's a big deal to us.
Yeah, it sounds dreadful, but...
Could we have the applicant's engineer step through? Stormwater management for both sites?
Sure, yeah, so, the existing house that was demoed on the corner had no stormwater management. As part of the grading permit application for that work, there was an infiltration bed designed and installed, or being installed, for those improvements to take all the roof runoff and a substantial portion of the impervious parking into that bed to control that, controlling it up to the 100-year storm, and then similar design on this side of the property, again, taking the roof drains from the house, taking a substantial portion of the driveway into the stormwater system. And we're also taking some off-site area that is coming down through the rear of the yard and capturing that and putting it into the system. It's a pretty substantially sized system. This was one, I want to just, before I speak incorrectly, yes, we are using what we call the storm tank modules, they're the open, I don't know if you're familiar with those, they're, we call, some people call them egg crates, milk crates, they're plastic, and they have, these are, I want to say are like two feet deep, and it's just open volume in there, that's taking all that stormwater runoff from the improvements, infiltrating it into the ground. And being as that there's, I think the narrative of the report where you're citing Ferriston Road, storm art system on Ferriston Road is more in reference of the bed that's installed on the lot along Ferriston Road, and since there is no outlet, excuse me, on these beds, they are designed for 100-year storm to take that runoff in and infiltrate that in the ground. Sometimes you'll have the systems that can release some runoff, being that we have no place to tie this into, we didn't have that option. So, it's substantially larger than what you would see on a lot of individual lots like this. So, it's been sized to take in quite a bit of runoff, like I said, from off-site and from the proposed improvements. So, I think between this lot being constructed and what's been installed for the lot on the corner, there's a substantial improvement, at least for our contributing area, to any stormwater issues that may be in that area. We can only do so much for our corner of Ferriston, and we're putting in something that's really hasn't even been there for the, exist, the previous home that was there on the corner as well.
I guess, one question just to raise is, I think I saw on the plan that there's going to be another semicircle driveway for the new house. Is there a need for another semicircle driveway? Because that would require removing that tree, and if you don't need that, you don't need to remove the tree.
I mean, it, consideration will be, could be given to eliminating that semicircle loop if it's determined that that tree, it needs to stay, obviously we'd have to re...
Because there are two trees there, and one's that 55-foot heritage tree, and if it's in bad shape, like, is it really that bad a shape, or is it something that could just absorb some of that water runoff, one? Two, there are two trees on the left side of...
Can you talk into the mic, please?
Sorry. I'm sorry. There are two trees to the left side of the house that are in the plan to be removed, and I know this is not the Shade Tree Commission, I just wanted to raise this. For some reason, the tree is, has a 20-foot setback from the left side of the property line and 25-foot setback from the right side. If you move it to the right, does that free up space to keep the trees? I'm a little biased because I live right there to the left, and I can hear the construction outside my window of that house, plus the pickleball courts that, I know that's Tridifering County, but I don't know if that's allowed for commercial use, that's another issue that Valley Forge has leased out. And then that house back right, we're okay with removing that, but I realize that's on two property lines as well. But, the last question I have and concern is, I've been emailing with the president of the school, inquiring about this lot, just because we wanted to go ahead of this happening, because we just moved in two years ago. And, we were under the impression and informed that this was sold to Rockwell. Is that, is that accurate?
Currently, I can say that currently Valley Forge owns that property and is the applicant for this. I know they're working with Rockwell. What their arrangements are, I can't, I'd have to check with them and see if that's something that they're, you know, want to...
Rockwell is listed as equitable owner.
And that was, it's the applicant and the owner is Valley Forge. That'll be a revision on our plan, that was a misunderstanding on my part.
Got it. So, so Rockwell's not part of this?
No, we are not the applicant, we are, we are talking to Valley Forge Military Academy about purchasing it, but we are not the applicant.
Thank you.
Got it. So, I'm just raising that concern because is there a bias to moving this house closer to our property as opposed to theirs, one? And then two, as a result, you're tearing downward trees?
Yeah, and Shade Tree is going to press that point at the next meeting, and I think, I mean, that's what we told the landscape architect to, you know, if there's not a reason to take those trees, if there's a design reason that you can have some flexibility, we would highly recommend that.
Right. That's it, thanks.
Understanding the concern of the neighbors, you'll know that I, if you know me, I ask this all the time, would you ask the Military Academy, right, the applicant, would they be willing, not a requirement, not of Shade Tree, but to just to plant additional trees along the property line with the existing home? I mean, it's fine if they want to do it with the home that's being built, that doesn't concern me, but would they be interested in planting additional trees along that property line?
Along this property line here?
Correct. Whether they move it or not, would they be willing to provide some slight buffer diffusion for those folks to the left, for lack of a better term?
We can definitely have that conversation, I believe in my conversations with our landscape architect is that he was having trouble fitting trees on the property to meet the code requirements and still consider them a viable tree that they'll survive. So, you know, we'll, we'll look at, you know, seeing what we can do potentially for some additional screening or buffering that we can fit in there, absolutely.
Thank you.
Additionally to that, have you thought about putting in some pervious driveway versus, you know, to address your points about the runoff, which is, it is an acute issue?
We haven't, we haven't given any consideration to that, since we were providing the stormwater management for the impervious, but it's something we can, we can discuss with the applicant to take a look at that. I mean, when we look at it from a stormwater management perspective, a lot of that is sized as if the stone underneath that pervious paver is an infiltration bed system, which is what we're providing there in the corner of the property. So, it's kind of just moving the infiltration location from one spot to another, but we can take a look at some of that.
And as far as the stormwater, our review letter does address that concern on the western side of the property there, where there is some uncaught coming off the property. We had a number of review comments, the majority of them were just cleanup items. We do make mention of that uncaught area, which would just require some re-grading.
Yes.
To try to tweak it, see where you would be able to get it into that infiltration bed or create another one.
Create some, yeah. And that, we noticed that comment and had that on the list of things to review as part of the revisions.
So, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, do I have a second?
I think you actually already made the motion and voted on it, so you're good to go.
Wow, Peter. Hasn't been that tough a meeting, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, next up, we have outdoor dining, Garrett Hill ordinance rewrite or new ordinance for outdoor dining in Garrett Hill, just to give everybody a little bit of perspective, the... Matt, there was public comment first, and I don't know if we want to do anything about the letter that was received? Yeah, I, hey, Chris, the public comment could, we're going to read the public, we're going to read this into the record, so, right, or how do we want to handle the...
There's no reason to read them, you all have... You all have copies, correct? Of both, of the two letters?
Yes.
Yeah, there, there, there's no reason or need to have them read into the record. This is not, we're not making a transcript. Trish is going to, as is required under Sunshine Act, we'll note them in the minutes. We'll give a one-sentence summary of what the comments are. But yeah, I, there, I mean.
The only reason I brought it up, Peter, was that the board of commission meeting on this issue, they did read into the record the letters.
If, if you want to, I'm not telling you, you can't. I'm just saying you don't have to.
Yeah, I think, given that we have people here who haven't probably been part of this discussion, I, I think I'd like to have the letters read in to the record. Or at least, at least if someone is prepared to read the letter into the public from the, into the record from the public. If, if someone can, is here to read the letter into the record.
Which letter?
There's two. They don't know that. Which is, whether or not they're read in, I feel like the public needs to know about them. And right now, nobody knows what we're talking about. So that's why this needs to be brought up by somebody. I'll go read them. Him, he can somebody print out copies and I'll go stand up there and read them?
You can read them from the dais.
Who's it from? Not the one we're talking about. This is why nobody, let's, it's, to me, this is a problem that nobody knows what we're talking about.
Well, the solicitor said, it's your call, right?
It's your call. I, I was just saying you don't, you're not obligated to do it. If you wish to do so, go right ahead.
All right. So I need a copy of one of the letters or Mike needs a copy of one of the letters.
I'm going to start with a letter from Tony Bailey. Let me confirm that that's correct. Yes. It's addressed to the commission. As a current resident of Radnor Township, Ward 72, I am writing to urge you to vote no on ordinance 2023-03. In recent years, Radnor Township residents and prior Radnor Township BOC, citing a variety of respective concerns related to health, safety and welfare, have said no to the following. A proposal to raise the height of certain structures to 35 feet in Garrett Hill slash permanent outdoor dining in Garrett Hill, ordinances 2021-20 and 2021-21. A proposed municipal parking lot in Garrett Hill, ordinance 2022-14. A proposed medical marijuana dispensary in Garrett Hill, see YouTube keyword Restore Town Hall Meeting, March 10, 2020. And there's some links that I'm not going to read all the letters to, but something about that. Ordinance 2023-03 guts the existing setback provisions as outlined in ordinance 2012-09, sections A, parentheses 10, parentheses B, parentheses C, and parentheses D. Given prior community sentiment surrounding issues of community safety and actions taken by prior iterations of the BOC, I am surprised that ordinance 2023-03 is under consideration. In my understanding, ordinance 2023-03 allows the permanent opportunity to consume food and alcoholic beverages outdoors in a residential community with either no setback or a setback of 50 feet. In contrast, the existing ordinance, ordinance 2012-09, allows for setbacks where applicable of 100 feet, sections A, 10, B and C, and 500 feet, sections A, 10, D, see ordinance 2012-09. Garrett Hill is not the same as the Wayne Business District. Too often I have heard restaurants in Wayne have. In my opinion, it is unfortunate that the dining establishments in Garrett Hill are not situated in the same way as those presently located in the parts of Wayne that is or actually a bona fide business district. Eating, drinking and merriment. For example, the Garrett Ale House, 157 Garrett Ave. And Flippin' Bailey's, 900 Conestoga Road. To my knowledge, both hold liquor licenses and close between midnight and 2:00 a.m. most of the time. According to Google, keyword Flippin' Bailey's, Flippin' Bailey's does not open until 4:00 p.m. on five out of seven days of the week. If passed, ordinance 2023-03 would allow for outdoor dining in Garrett Hill between March 1 and November 30, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. See ordinance 2023-03, Article A, Paragraph 2. See also ordinance 2012-09, Section A 9. As such, I am concerned about quality of life issues such as noise pollution, light pollution, parking issues, sidewalk obstruction and the increased presence of vermin. See rats have made themselves at home in some New York City outdoor dining sheds. The cart is before the horse. I do not recall an onsite community meeting being held with regard to ordinance 2023-03. I have not seen or heard any current opinion put forward by any board of health, code department or engineering department that has jurisdiction in Radnor Township. Additionally, I have not seen any evidence that the permitted use of outdoor dining on a permanent basis as currently specified in ordinance 2023-03 would provide a needed lifeline to a given establishment without having a harmful effect on the harmony of our community. The community said no to permanent outdoor dining in Garrett Hill in 2021. Permanent outdoor dining in Garrett Hill was a bad idea then and it's still a bad idea. Again, I am urging each of you to vote no on ordinance 2023-03. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Tony Bailey. I don't know if I have the other one handy.
It was emailed to you guys this morning?
Yeah, I, no, I'm not sure what happened to it. Okay, I have it. Uh, got it. No preview available. I think I got it. Dated July 10th, which is today. Dear Planning Commission members, we are unable to attend tonight's meeting but wanted to offer our comments with regard to the introduction of ordinance 2023-03. Please do not recommend the adoption of this detrimentally and patently unfair ordinance. As the community labored over various interrelated issues during the Garrett Hill zoning process, the planning, planners and steering committee eventually came to the realization that outdoor dining does not fit in Garrett Hill. With regard to subsection 115.4A, 10F, setbacks for all other township residents, 500 feet, propose for Garrett Hill 10% of what is considered adequate for everyone else, 50 feet. And this setback is only for single-family dwellings. No setbacks for two-family or semi-detached. Even with the protection of adequate setbacks, the prospect of outdoor dining is just not physically possible in Garrett Hill, given the close proximity of residents to the GHCR district. If outdoor dining were to be sanctioned in Garrett Hill, shouldn't the existing outdoor dining ordinance protections, section 28115.4, protect Garrett Hillians as well? Why should Garrett Hillians be denied the peaceful enjoyment of their properties when the protection of adequate setbacks are provided to all other township residents? With regard to subsection 115.4A, 10G, increasing the number of seats without increasing parking is ill-conceived. While a one-seat indoor for one-seat outdoor swap sounds good on paper, it is unenforceable and therefore of no effect. It would only serve to increase the severity of the parking shortage in Garrett Hill and lead to conflict with attempted enforcement and competition for parking. Currently, this proposed ordinance benefits a single property owner at the expense of all others, while leaving the door wide open to detrimental unintended consequences as redevelopment occurs. Zoning is meant to create protection, foster harmony and enhance living and community. The proposed ordinance will ensure degradation and create conflict. Without setback in parking protections, adjacent properties will see their property values diminished. Ask yourselves, would I stand for the township imposing zoning that would sanction outdoor dining and drinking from 8:00 a.m. in the morning till 10:00 at night for 50 people, 50 feet away from my yard? How is it okay to impose this on the residents of Garrett Hill? Respectfully, please do not recommend adoption of this detrimental and patently unfair ordinance. Thank you for all your efforts on behalf of Radnor Township residents. Rick and Patty Barker, 920 Lewis Lane, Rosemont. The end.
Thank you, Mike. I just, before we get started here, number one, I'd like to acknowledge Commissioner Farley from Garrett Hill area, who is in attendance tonight. And as you may or, may or may not know, in the board of commissioners meeting in May, this ordinance was introduced. It was, I think the vote was five to one or six to one in favor of introducing this. And our job, the planning commission job, is to weigh in in terms of an opinion on the ordinance in terms of, do we like it? Do we not like it? Do we not care? It, it's going to go back to the board of commissioners. So I think we, it would be wise at this point to hear from the commissioner who introduced the legislation. Sean, if you're, if you're up for that?
Yeah, thank you. I know this has gone back and forth a bunch of times. And first of all, I do want to thank staff, Mr. Norsini as well as Kevin Kachansky. And we have a, a fill-in, her name is Patty, as well for helping craft this, this piece of legislation, which I feel it's important. It's been rewritten. It's addressed some of the issues that has, that have been stated and concerns. Without giving my, my personal opinion, and I think you all know what that is, let me just state what I believe are certain facts. Businesses, we have a, you know, whether you want to call it a business district or not, and, and I've heard from the letters, in some, some ways it's advantageous to call it that. In other ways, it's not. It is a business district and there are businesses in there and they need to compete. Times change, times evolve. Since COVID, I think we've seen that. The businesses, the restaurants, and it's not for two businesses. All the other businesses, if they decide that they want to use it, they can use it. If they don't want outdoor dining, they don't have to. It just gives them an option to help compete with those businesses that are, yes, in Wayne, Laura Marion, Berwin, King of Prussia, to be on a level playing field. I heard, you know, not to kind of convolute things, but you know, it's, in the letter that Ms., Mr. and Mrs. Barker wrote, they talked about how that would hurt property value. Prior and why this is coming strictly as one issue, not two. What hurts property value is when your neighbor across the train tracks can build 35 feet and your other neighbor, if you live on the same side of the train tracks, can only go 30 feet. That hurts property values. My opinion, and I'm of the belief that the Garrett Hill overlay ordinance has hurt property values and it has stunted Garrett Hill when it comes to, you know, which what I feel would be intelligent growth. Moving forward, getting back to, to where we are now. COVID. COVID has proven that we need outdoor dining. COVID has proven that outdoor dining works in Garrett Hill. We've had outdoor dining in Garrett Hill since the beginning of COVID, more or less. And there've been no complaints. They talk about the quality of life issues, but I don't hear one of them saying that they've called the police or there's drunken behavior, rowdiness, noise violations. They're saying that that could happen, yet we've had it for three years. And I did reach out to the chief and Chief Flanagan and there are minimal, minimal issues when it comes to rowdiness. And there are a couple of neighbors here tonight and I, I always appreciate their opinion, whether you're for or you're against. Absolutely. Come on out and say what you want to say. And, and the letters are great. But the neighbors that I've spoken to before, and I didn't poll these people recently because I think that COVID has proven that outdoor dining in Garrett Hill works. But, you know, I do have petitions. I'm sure they have petitions as well. And these are petitions right here. This is one of people that live in that restricted part of the overlay that were for it. And this is strictly for outdoor dining, not for the height. I put a, a Facebook poll up years ago when this was going on. I don't know if I have a date on it, September 22nd. So this was September 22nd, maybe 2021. And there are 41 people that were for it and three people were against it. And I'm happy to circulate this as well. Chairman MJ reached out to me and I shared a bunch of letters. I don't know if he shared them with you, Matt? Did he share them with you? Okay. Did he share any of them? Did any of you get those letters? Okay. So I can share those letters with you where the neighbors want it or they don't have a problem with it. But, you know, again, getting back to that point, staff has, they've done a good job where it's not going to be in effect on parking. It's one for one. If you take a parking space out, then you have to account for that with the seat. So you would lose an additional three seats if you take away a, a parking spot, I believe. So, so I don't think parking's the issue. The other issue I heard was setbacks. We're not hearing crazy noise. And this is not, people aren't going to be drinking outside. It's, these are restaurants. These are family restaurants now. These are not nuisance bars. And they are enforceable. If there's noise, if there's seating issues, codes come in, the police come in, and they've done that before, either in these restaurants or other restaurants as well. One more thing I'll say, these are, these are, all of them, they're good business owners. They do a lot for the community. I think we saw that the Fourth of July parade. Yeah, they open up their, 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 their doors to have announcers come in, people use the bathroom, et cetera. And it's not, like I said, it's not one business. It's the whole community and it is a community. And when you lose one business, like Garrett Hill Pizza was vacant for years. The Locksmith, if you're familiar, was vacant for years. And when that stuff shatters, it's very, very hard to get, to rebuild that. So my, my final point with this is, the Fourth of July parade, again, I think it's, it's important. There was not one piece of trash. That was all the community and all the restaurant owners and all the, the people that helped pick that up. That was not, you know, that was not the township that cleaned it up and set it up like they did the parks and, and other stuff. So from the standpoint where I represent the community, I think that Garrett Hill needs this and I think the community needs this. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. I, I have some things to ask, but do any other commissioners have anything right now to say? Or should I go?
Is there anyone from the public here who is supportive of this?
So again, MJ asked me to forward letters to you. Now, for the most part, the people are supportive of it. I mean, I can show you that they are. There are people here that are against it. Most of the people here, I think that this is a generational thing. I hate to say. Well, I think it is to a certain point, a generational thing. The, well.
Let's not, let's not react this way. Be respectful.
You know, when you look at the, the people that have the kids, they may be having activities and such. And that's why I had them write letters. And they may not be able to attend. But they did sign the petition and they did, a lot of them did do that, that Facebook poll as well. So there, there is appetite for it. There are people for it and they just may not be able to get here. They're not, you know, they have other things to do, but they did let their, they did let their opinions known. And what I'll do now is I will forward some of those emails to you.
Very good. So Sean, Bywood Seafood, just as an example, like they make food.
Sure.
And they have like a bunch of little spaces in front of their store. Could they do outdoor dining? Like, you know, if somebody buys a crab cake, could they set it? Like, you know, if somebody buys a crab cake, could they set a table up and have them eat the crab cake?
I'm going to probably defer to Steve on that.
Now, where I'm going with this, though, is that...
Oh, yeah, I don't know how they're zoned.
How big could this get, you know? Like, in other words...
They don't have seating in there, so they would have to have seating in there. So if they're going to take a parking spot, right, they would have to move a parking spot, and then they would have to lose another three seats. So since they don't really have seating in there, that doesn't necessarily apply.
So these smaller places probably wouldn't be interested or have the facility to do it?
Correct.
So you're looking at Flip and Bailey's for sure, because they've had it.
Yeah, and the Ale House, and then maybe the new restaurant, Exit 13.
I was led to believe that this dining was going to take place on the existing sidewalks and not in parking spaces.
No, I believe that it would take place, it would take place on the private property. So the Exit 13, if they want it, that's private property where their parking spots are. For them, it may be very cumbersome. Again, it's something that if they choose, you know, they have big windows and whatnot. Again, it's something that if they choose, they want to do. They, you know, these restaurants have the option. All I'm saying is, let's give these restaurants the option to compete on a fair, fair playing field. And whether they choose to do it, that's really up to them.
I mean, the only thing, you know, when I watched the Board of Commissioners meeting use the level playing field, and this is totally respectful, I mean, it may sound like it's not, but it's not. So if there's two different games, right? There's a game in Wayne, and there's a game in Garrett Hill, and you want those two games to be on a level playing field, well, they have to be the same game. The game, the outdoor dining game in Garrett Hill is different from the outdoor dining game in Wayne.
Let me then rephrase instead of saying level playing field. Let's try to make it more equitable, okay? These restaurants, these community leaders, these business owners, they do offer a lot to the community. And I think that everything that happened with COVID and how things are going in general, I think that if we can at least help them, like I said, make things maybe not level playing field, but more equitable, give them the tools, whether they choose to use it or not, and all these restaurants. You know, Flip and Bailey's may not be there tomorrow, could be a bank, I don't know. They could knock down the Locksmith, which is now a construction, and make it another, a larger restaurant. I don't know what's happening today or tomorrow, you know, but I think that these, that it's too restrictive right now. So to allow for, to allow for something so when businesses close, that they can reopen, and it's not a three- or four-year period, I think it's important, you know, for the community, for the tax base, for the neighborhood. You know, no one likes driving through a neighborhood with shattered business. We have a very, very small neighborhood. And when you hear, when I hear about this business district, and there's two of them, I don't know if you know that, there are two business districts in Garrett Hill. The one is on Garrett Avenue. And what doesn't make sense to me, and the plan wasn't thought out, you have permit parking only on the first part of Garrett Avenue, from Conestoga Road to the trolley tracks, permit parking only, but it's a business district. And there's one business there, she cuts hair, but how are you supposed to park in a permit parking only? Where are you going to park? You can't, right? Like, you can't. So it wasn't particularly thought out, I don't think that it particularly worked very well, and not to, you know, the community, the community, they put a lot of time in it, and I'm understanding of that, and I appreciate it, but I think we've tried something for many years. And I think that you can look to see what needs to be changed, what can be changed, and what can be changed in an intelligent way, as opposed to just, you know, clearcutting it and starting from scratch. And like I said, this has happened for three years. This is not like we don't know what's going on, what, you know, it's not like we're just throwing a dart and say, hey, let's see what happens. We know what's happened. We know it's happened for three years. And then neighbors know what's happened for three years. And I think the point is, is that generally speaking, it's been fine for the community, and I think the community embraces it, especially on, not nights like tonight where it's muggy, but nights where it's 80, 85 degrees. Who doesn't want to go out there and have, you know, have a dinner with their family, or have a plate of nachos and, yes, a beer? And I think that's what the community needs, and I don't think it's detrimental in any way to the community. And most, one more thing, these are neighborhood bars, as I said, most of the people walk there anyway, so.
So one thing that I was puzzled by at the BOC meeting was that there's a one-to-one type ratio where, I probably have this wrong, but you can correct me, where if you, you lose an indoor spot if you have an outdoor spot.
Correct.
So how is that economically more advantageous? You got the same count, like, you just have somebody sitting outside, not inside?
Sure. Some people want to go outside for...
No, no, what I'm saying is for the owner, like, of the establishment who, you say, you know, equitable, level playing field, how does that make his business more prosperous? If you have the same patron count?
That's only if he's full.
Yeah, I mean, you're missing the premise.
Tonight, I want to go eat outside. I can't go to Garrett Hill. So Garrett Hill, there's going to be this open spot at one restaurant because I went to Wayne, because I'm eating outside.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, now...
It's a solid point.
Yesterday, when it was pouring rain, didn't help them at all.
So let me, in the meantime, while you talk to the people, what I'm going to do is, I will forward you, Matt, I think I have your email, some of these letters, and they're older. I didn't want to poll people, it's, they're sick and tired of hearing it, they're for it, they've proven that they're for it. And, but if I can, if I can forward you...
Sure.
Those emails, I know that I sent them to MJ, and then if you want to resubmit them as you see fit.
Commissioner Farhi, could you, could I, I don't mean to interrupt, could you...
Sure, no, please, please.
Send those emails to Trish, and she'll distribute them to the planning commission, and then we have them for part of the record.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, Matt?
Yes.
So I understand this debate, and I'm glad that we're having this dialogue and debate, but I would love to hear from those business owners themselves. And I understand their business owners, it's not easy for them to come out on a Monday evening, but is there any way we can accommodate them, through virtual or Zoom or something, and just to hear them out?
Sure. I mean, there's nothing precluding you. I know that in the past, Skip and Matt, you went to Villanova, you did a walkabout for the garage. Yeah, I'm happy to give you those names, or you can knock on those doors, there's only a few of them. And it's not necessarily to just those restaurants. Talk to all the business owners. You know, as I say, I think a rising tide lifts all ships, and the opposite is true. So when you see businesses fail, who's going to want to invest and open a new business in an area that has multiple vacancies, and multiple vacancies for a considerable period of time? So, yeah, again, I can give you those names offline, or you can go walk that, and I'm happy to walk and make those introductions if you'd like.
That'd be okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine. I'd be interested in doing that as well. And just one point of clarification before we go, and I'm more than willing to listen, but this is new business, there will be no vote tonight, and no actual public, no actual board opinion. Is that, is that what we're anticipating at the end of this?
No. I mean, you don't have to vote, but you're not precluded from voting at this point in time. Normally, with ordinances, planning, you know, planning commission reviews them, you give your opinion. The opinion might just be a recommendation to adopt it, or a recommendation not to adopt it, or you can go into specifics as to, well, we think this section needs to be tweaked, this section should be removed, you need to add something on this. But, yeah, no, this is a recommend, this is sent to you for your review for a recommendation to the board, which does require a vote. You don't have to do it tonight if you want to put it off, but, yeah, eventually, yeah, I think the board is looking for a vote from you.
Yeah, something interesting happened at the Board of Commissioners meeting. Sean, you said that you would be willing to consider eight o'clock as the time when you could make your order, when you're outdoor dining, and then, and then at nine or 9:30, it's over. And to me, that sounded like a bit of a compromise. And I think maybe in this situation, everybody should think about, like, is there a compromise here? Is there a way to respect everybody else? Like, is there a way to respect the trades folk, and is there a way to respect the citizens who live within 100 feet? Is there some, is there some way to get through this? Because I think a lot of people like outdoor dining, but I think a lot of people also don't like outdoor dining where a car could wipe out two families.
Well, that's in Wayne, number, you know, a car that...
Well, it's less likely, though, than in Garrett Hill, in my opinion.
I mean, I'm just saying a car could easily hop the curve. But to answer your question about a compromise, Rick and Patty Barker wrote a letter, and I remember meeting them several years back and talking about the height and outdoor dining. And, you know, they wrote a letter, so I think that this is fair game. And I said, hey, like, give me some ideas, help me out. But you can't just say no for the sake of saying no. Like, we're in a different age, let's try to find that common ground. And I was heard, no, based on this, the setbacks, the overlay, and it's law, and that's it. And that's a frustration, that's a lot of the frustration behind this, that there hasn't been a compromise. Yeah, I think if eight o'clock, it's, these are family establishments. Eight o'clock, it's when you put your order in, and, you know, if you're not done by 10 or by nine, maybe do the grace nine, and then you do a 15-minute grace period, they find a table for you inside. That's fine, I think that's reasonable. You know, I mean, I don't think anyone's, like I said, no one's been abusive with, since COVID, of going outside, and it's not really that used, used that much anyway. And that's, that's kind of the hurt behind it, is because you're asking business owners to say, well, let's kind of do this and hedge our bet, and not buy the good furniture, and not put the improvements in, and then if it passes, well, then we have to do it all over again. And again, when you talk about property values, and you talk about businesses and to that nature, yeah, I mean, asking business owners to do things twice when it's clearly in front of you, again, if you want to say, playing field or unfair, inequitable, that's just, I think, asking too much for the business owners that do, they do a lot for the community. It's not that they come in and they do nothing. They're, these are mom and pop people. This is not a large corporation that's going to toe some line. These are mom and pops. Every business in Garrett Hill is a mom and pop.
I have a question. During COVID, how many of the restaurants did outdoor dining?
So a bunch of them tried it. I don't know, I think Flips did it. I know Antonella's tried it for a little bit. I know that, what's it, Garrett Hill, not Garrett Hill, Conestoga Pizza had some tables out. It didn't last very long, but again, I think if there's something in place, you know, then something, but again, it's up to the business owners whether or not it's feasible for them. But it wasn't just, excuse me, Flips or the Ale House, there were two other businesses that have done it. It's my understanding that Antonella's has changed hands, so if there's any kind of synergy or something there where they could do that, use a spot or two, then maybe they would, they could do that.
You think we should hear from the public? Would anyone like to present? Come up, introduce yourself, address?
Lynn Ellis, 908 Lewis Lane in Brind'Amber. My husband and I were walking Garrett Hill, and we walked up the sidewalk along the Ale House and made the turn east, right in front of the Ale House, and there were little bistro tables out there with chairs. We had to walk single file around them because there was nobody sitting there. If somebody was sitting there, you'd have to walk in the street. It's not a big sidewalk like North Wayne Avenue. I ate outside one time, one time in my life, in Wayne, and all you could taste were the fumes from the cars. It was really awful. I'd never do it again. Thank you.
Good afternoon, evening. My name's Dean Sillinger. I live at 40 Wentworth Lane, so I live a few hundred feet from this. And once, there's a bus stop right there, Flip and Bailey's, so the kids aren't going to have anywhere to stand because there's going to be a bunch of tables there. There's a bus stop right there, Flip and Bailey's, there's going to be a bunch of tables, so the kids, so you're going to have to move the bus stop somewhere because it's been there forever. Another thing, anytime, because I go to these restaurants all the time, I have no place to park, I have to walk down there because there's no parking spaces. Now, if you add more customers to these restaurants, you're just going to make it into West Philly. You're going to have cars all over the place. It's just, it isn't good now. So you take a nice place, and you just mess it up, and that's what this is, that's what's going to happen here. I've been there for 30 years, I love it, it's very nice, but if you start increasing the traffic, the noise, and I'm not saying there's a bunch of drunk people at the bars whooping it up, but what I'm saying is if you just put more people into a smaller space, you start losing the quality of the life there. So you take Garrett Hill, and you make it into something else. And so I didn't say it very eloquently, but I'm definitely opposed to this. All right?
Matt, when they're done, I would like to address some of those issues, if I could, those comments.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for doing, great job. My name is Lauren Wiegand, I live at 229 Williams Road, and I would like to read an email that Dr. Addie Smith sent to Kevin Kachansky. Dear commissioners, as a third-generation Garrett Hill resident with a fourth generation in kindergarten, I take pride in this neighborhood and recall passed-down stories of wonderful folks, strong community, and fun. Clem McCrone taught my grandmother to drive a stick shift in this neighborhood. I can only imagine what they would think about changing the actual character of this special neighborhood for someone's financial gain. I was enlightened tonight about the proposed changes to zoning. Why this information wasn't mailed in paper form, or put, excuse me, put in our mailboxes, I have no idea. Without knowing all of the information, we can't make solid decisions, and for something as important as our community, this lack of dissemination is unacceptable. Here are a few things folks who don't live close to Conestoga Road, on Williams Road and Garrett Avenue, might not appreciate. Leaving windows open at night during late spring, summer, and early fall comes at a price. Loud voices and music, disturbing altercations with foul language, smoke, people leaving the bars and restaurants, restaurants walking on our streets to get to their vehicles, some intoxicated and loud, some high and are actually smoking marijuana on our streets, cars being keyed or tires being punctured. My car was affected by both of these incidents in different years. Drivers speed on Williams Road like they're above the law with disregard for anyone's safety. Parking has been challenging since my grandmother lived here, and it becomes more difficult as time passes. We share driveways and park on only one side of the street. More often than not, there are three or more vehicles for each twin. When the college students residing on Garrett Avenue have friends over, they park on Williams Road. And the bar/restaurant patrons' vehicles and residents, including families with babies and the elderly, are forced to park blocks away from their homes, all the while paying high taxes. So we have proposed changes to zoning, and I cannot understand how they will benefit your constituents close to the business district on Conestoga Road. In particular, as one parking spot is required for every three seats in the new restaurant going into the Garrett Hill Pizza building, where exactly will patrons park if... going into the Garrett Hill Pizza Building, where exactly will patrons park if the restaurant lacks seven of the needed parking spots? Considering history, I bet it will be Williams Road. The increased traffic to this quaint neighborhood is not in the best interest of Garrett Hill. Our streets are full of children and pets. Where is concern for them? And then there's the outdoor dining, which was posed as temporary due to COVID, and proposed distances from houses and buildings, 50 feet from a single-family home property? If your home was that close to a noisy and odorous business, how would you feel? Encroached, trapped, put upon, unhappy? Again, while paying the same taxes as folks not close to the business district? And what's the standard in other towns? 50 feet is preposterous and unfair, and I doubt any other mainline town has that standard. Please consider all opinions. Folks have complained, and that has somehow not been brought to light. All of the information needs to be given to all of our residents. Otherwise, it's not honest. This is from Dr. Addie Smith, and she lives at 221 Williams Road. She also sent an addendum, which is more recent. This first one was written in October of 2021. The second one is more to do with what's happening now. And she says, more recent, more recent, please find a copy of the letter I sent to Commissioners in 2021. I understand the issue of outdoor dining is still being entertained. Some additions to my previous letter are as follows. More recently, I've personally witnessed employees of establishments on the Garrett Avenue side of Conestoga Road park on Williams Road. In addition to those establishments on the Williams Road side of Conestoga Road, where is the problem solving for folks who are pro-outdoor seating? Who is listening to those of us who live close to the noise and congestion? Why do they keep pushing for this when they don't live here? I don't know the answer to these questions. It doesn't feel like a community. It feels like a tug-of-war. I realize this addition and my letter from 2021 might be shared at the meeting tomorrow night. After I wrote that letter, I saw several folks on Facebook who wanted to know who was opposed to outdoor seating. No one asked the reasons, just who are these people and the way of their wants? As I looked into it, I learned about the right to know, and I felt fearful. Those folks may in fact learn that I am one of the many opposed to outdoor seating. As I write again, I'm not able to attend the meeting as I have a young son, and I'm still fearful of being targeted, since I've already been targeted on two separate occasions. Some things are more important than fear. Sincerely, Dr. Addie Smith.
Good evening. I'm Tom Winters. I live at 326 Williams Road, where I have resided for nearly four decades. As a university professor, I learned that planning paid off for my students. I also have realized how important planning is for Radnor as well as your critical role in this process. The development of our comprehensive land use plan rests in your hands. Regrettably, our current plan is 20 years old. However, its recognition of the unique nature of Radnor and its vision to make a great community even better remains true. I trust you are familiar with its contents and actively monitor its recommendations. Among its goals were to maintain and protect our many small residential neighborhoods. Specifically, a recommendation was made to strengthen the Garrett Hill District as a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood convenience district. In response to the zoning and code changes suggested in the document, a Save Garrett Hill campaign was waged. This grassroots community effort guided and developed by professional planners resulted in the Garrett Hill Overlay District that was adopted in 2009. At that time, there were clear sentiment against outdoor dining. In fact, there were even provisions about keeping the windows closed in existing restaurants to limit noise. Why? People live less than a stone's throw away. Radnor residents, particularly those who live in the most densely populated ward of the township, pay considerably higher taxes under recent assessments. We deserve a plan. Piecemeal changes that erode the quality of life and negate the planning inherent in the Garrett Hill Overlay District are counterproductive to comprehensive land development. For the sake of the common good, I urge you not to adopt any new changes in subdivision and land development codes, except as to assure compliance with Pennsylvania's Municipalities' Planning Code, the MPC. As a retired educator, my assignment to you is to focus on the long overdue work of developing a comprehensive land use plan. The process and the product will be judged not only by its transparency, but also by the inclusion of broad involvement and input of all citizens, not just those with a vested interest. Please stop and think. Make a good choice for the future of Radnor Township. Accountability is important. Thank you.
I will note that during the Board of Commissioners meeting in May, one Commissioner, Jake Abel, said he would have, would prefer if this not happened at this time, that it be taken up by the group doing the comprehensive plan. And so that whatever, I'm just saying that that's something that I noticed at that, at
First of all, I really want to thank all of you for your consideration of this. My name is Dee Delaney. I live at 229 Williams Road. I've been in, lived in Radnor Township for 29 years, for the last 26 in Garrett Hill. And sometimes I think when people talk about Garrett Hill, and they, they want to talk about an equal, fair thing between other establishments, and I know Sean Farhi even mentions King of Prussia, that we should offer the same opportunities, I'm sort of aghast at that idea. So what is Garrett Hill and what are we not? First, what we are not. We are not Wayne. We are not Bryn Mawr. We are not Ardmore. We are not Wynwood. We are not King of Prussia. What do all of these mainline business communities have in common? These business districts are defined and boundary by the R5 Septa Amtrak train lines. Those same rail line embankments create a large physical protective barrier for their residential neighborhoods. In Garrett Hill, we have no large physical railroad embankments to protect us. We have you. As soon as you take one step away from this small, short strip of businesses on Conestoga Road, you're in someone's yard. Take a couple of more steps, and you're in their home. Our original Garrett Hill businesses consisted of small mom-and-pop shops that served the needs of the residents living there and still do. What is Garrett Hill? According to the Delaware County 2035 Economic Development Plan, Garrett Hill would be defined as a mature neighborhood. Give me one second. It addresses, a Delco Plan addresses the unique value of mature neighborhoods. And they advise that any new development, redevelopment, and revitalization should fit in with the existing desired character of the community, including a range of housing options that will protect the stability and enhance the character of mature neighborhoods. Their traditional neighborhood patterns provide the unique community characteristic that developers are attempting to replicate in new developments. We already have that. Good development and good governance requires good, thoughtful, problem-solving solutions. I fully support Jake Abel's recommendation in the May 22 Board of Commissioners meeting when he said, I don't understand why we are doing this now. We just went through this whole process of initiating a new master plan for the entire township. Why is this blanket ordinance, 2023-03 change, being pushed, pushed through now? Why indeed? Our mature neighborhood of Garrett Hill deserves and demands better than this. Supporting the process of the new Radnor Township New Master Plan will also go a long way in restoring trust in our Radnor Township Commissioners. Good development and good governance requires creativity. It requires good communication and compromises. It may take more time, but I firmly believe it would be time well-spent, well-invested, and that we all, our businesses, our residents, and our township, will be better for it. This blanket 2023-03 ordinance that was proposed by Commissioner Farhi during the 522 Board of Commissioner meeting without notifying the constituents most affected by it, offering minuscule setbacks for our residents with no real enforceable protections for residents, will only exacerbate the real and existing problems of perfect, of parking, traffic, and noise without offering any real solutions. I respect, respectfully ask and, and thank that we deserve and demand better. We deserve and demand the same rights and protections enjoyed by all Radnor residents and befitting a mature neighborhood, who, although it says mature, we have multiple young families with kids very close to the area that we're talking about. And we plan on bringing them to the Board of Commissioner meeting in, that I think is scheduled in August. We deserve and demand the same rights and protections enjoyed by all Radnor residents whose residents were our neighborhood, historically helped build the Main Line, and whose today's, today's residents continue to help to serve many of the vital, essential services of Radnor Township and the Main Line. We have a lot of healthcare workers working in, on the Main Line. They serve Radnor Township. They serve other parts of the Main Line. We have, we have educators in the same, working for Radnor Township. So respectfully and with great appreciation, we thank you for your consideration and hope for your support.
Good evening. And thank you for being here and for your time and all the effort you put into this. My name is Kim Cruz. I live on Garrett Avenue. All of Garrett Avenue is permit parking. And, but that's not my point. My point is, the way the ordinance is drafted, I don't support it. However, if you changed the, the single-family dwelling to actually apply to the semi-detached, the single-family dwelling and the row homes that are there, then, and have it capped at 9:00 PM, then I would actually support this ordinance. So I hope you consider that, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Toni Bailey-Mita, M-I-T-A. I have a few respectful things to say concerning some of the statements made. I'd like to read mine that Garrett Hill is not a business district. It should never be equated with Wayne, which has a very active business community and thriving. So it's, it's a community, a thriving community, community, active with a number of businesses. Two, I'd like to state that there are no shuttered businesses. The locksmith was being renovated, and there was a fire, so he had to move. I, I know him personally. So we were wondering what had happened to him. He had to move. That was, it was not shuttered due to anything because of lack of business. He is, has a thriving business. I think that you got my email and that maybe it was read. There were a number of concerns that I put in the email about pollution, about, you know, rodents, you know, about the community itself, you know, have the intrusiveness of people coming at possibly 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So the people before me have all stated very well their opposition to this. What I am saying is that we should keep in place the old zoning 280-115.4 outdoor dining regulations that was well thought out with a lawyer, with a planner, by a couple of hundred people in the community that were actively involved with this. And lastly, the peace and sanctity of Garrett Hill should be kept in place. I know the community well, and it, it's a wonderful place to live. We are concerned that with all these ordinance changes, it will change our community forever.
Matt, can I just touch on a couple of issues?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Sean, there isn't any other public comment? Yeah, sure.
So, what I've heard, that it's a mature neighborhood with high taxes. So when these businesses go out, like the frame shop and the locksmith, no one's going to go in there again if they're restricted on how they can compete. Ms. Bailey said that, I guess she doesn't want the business district to be thriving. I'm, I'm confused. You can't have it both ways. They're either, it's either for intelligent growth, intelligent changes, or you're not. Regarding the comprehensive plan, why are we doing this before? As you know, I'm not, and, and that's, that's an important point that Commissioner Abel made. But we did change our comp plan, the, the associates, the consultants, and we have not even begun, in my understanding, to interview and these new people. So these are long, long processes. Back in 2021, I heard, well, don't do it because there's COVID. Now it's, don't do it because it's this. There's always going to be, don't do it because it's Christmas, or why are you having the meeting now because it's summer? There's always going to be another reason why you postpone it. But again, this will sunset, I don't know if you're aware, this will sunset at the end of the year. So we're already, you know, it's July, and then it's August, and that's the eighth month of the year. So allowing these businesses that want to partake in this, to maybe make some improvements, maybe structural, maybe buying equipment, we know that there is sometimes a lag when it comes to buying, you know, tables or chairs or whatever, you have to order that. So, and again, I've heard parking, I've heard noise, but everything I've heard, rats, rodents, I, I feel that a lot of it is just unfounded conjecture. Talk to Chris Flon again. Talk to the police and find out how many noise violations have been since COVID. I think it's five.
Well, Sean, let me ask you, like, just getting back to the, the idea of compromise. What if, what if some planning commissioners who are interested in you and the community and the business owners meet?
So.
Would, just, would that be beneficial? What, do you think it would be beneficial? I personally think it would be beneficial because.
Matt, you know, I, Matt, so the answer is, I, for me, I've kind of passed that point where I've asked Rick Barker, and I've asked these people, and I've had meetings here that are on record. I've sent emails out. I had a town hall meeting here, and it's on Facebook, and there's a picture of me with three people in the audience, because no one came. Because it's not that big of a, it's not that, it wasn't that big of a deal. I was literally speaking to three people in the room, and there were maybe three or four or five people on Zoom. Again, the overwhelming, and I don't know if, if you've gotten those emails. Again, the overwhelming, and I don't know if, if you've gotten those emails or not, the overwhelming majority of the residents do want that. And the compromise that Ms. Cruz made, that's definitely something that we can do. But all we're hearing is no, 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 for reasons that are based out of fear and there's not, the parking's been addressed.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to avoid the planning commission having no sentiment about this. You know, that, that's the worst possible outcome for me.
Well, I mean, to your point, when we were here back in 2021, the planning committee voted unanimously for it, as I'm sure you're aware.
Yeah, I was on.
And you voted unanimously for it. And I don't think anything's changed, except we have three years of data that shows that it's not a nuisance. It's not, it doesn't hurt the neighborhood. In fact, I think it helps the neighborhood. So that's, again, what I'm hearing is, well, you have these things in place where we've changed the ordinance, it's tweaked, I think it's much better, and we have three years of data and it was fine three years ago and now it's better, but nothing is going to satisfy, you know, some fears that I believe are unfounded. And I, you know, and I can talk to you all day, I could go tit for tat with them all day. It doesn't help anyone. You'll see those emails that I'll send to you. Ms. Sherman is going to put them in for the record for everybody. So, and, you know, they're all subject to a right to know request as well.
Well, what about the idea that somebody on the planning commission drafts some changes to the ordinance and runs them past the BOC?
Sure.
I mean, in terms of like the eight o'clock shut off.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, eight o'clock, you know, last meal's at eight o'clock and, you know, you have to go in by nine or, you know, by nine or 9:15? Yeah.
Or maybe making, making it more specific about what establishments can and cannot have this, you know, Sean?
Sure, so, I mean, and that's, that's the thing. I wrote here, would include outdoor dining that could take place from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So if there was a brunch, say, you could go outside. I don't think Flips is gonna, or the Owl House or Garrett Hole Pizza would be open at 9:00 AM unless it's like a brunch. But yeah, I mean, this was in that petition that was emailed to you. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't benefit anyone if, you know, it's, of course, it's a neighborhood. It doesn't benefit anyone if you're going to have loud music at 11 o'clock at night. That doesn't, that doesn't help anybody. No one wants that. The business owners don't want that. People just want to go sit out on a nice night and, you know, have nachos or a hamburger. And then I also heard about, you know, and all the tables would, would be on their private property, I believe. So if you have to walk around it, then you're walking on their private property. You're not walking on the right of way. If someone doesn't want to eat there because of fumes, that's fine. They don't have to eat there. But don't tell someone else that they can't eat there because you don't like fumes. And the bus stop, yeah, I mean, the bus stops, maybe three, four o'clock, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe they could have some outdoor dining during lunchtime, but most of the time, people would have that for dinner. And the times that you're going to have outdoor dining are typically going to be from May to September, October. So there's, you know, it's not going to intersect 100%. Again, I feel like, I said I wasn't going to go tit for tat and I am, but I mean, like, it's, I just don't feel that a lot of this stuff is founded. I think that the ordinance is really, really well-written and it addresses parking. Noise is proven not to be an issue. And, you know, we need to help those people in the community that help us, that pay these high taxes. We don't want to see them go out of business. And yeah, we have to make it more equitable or playing field that's more level.
Okay, I get that. So we're, I don't know where we are here.
Chairman, there are a few hands in the audience.
Sure, come on up, Sarah.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue, for 41 years. And I don't have a ball in this game. I live too far away. I'm a single old woman and I don't go out to eat and I can't drink because I'm a celiac. The clarity I'm asking for is in bold. Article 3B, it says, "Outdoor dining shall be permitted within the PLO district as an accessory use on the same premises as and as part of one of the following licensed food establishments that has indoor seating." What is the PLO district?
What's it?
It's over where the Penn Med is.
Okay, so that's in this ordinance. And the other is Article 4.
Sarah, that's actually in the existing ordinance. That's not part of the amendment.
Well, this is what I took off the web for this meeting.
Right, but that, that's, that's what was adopted years ago when outdoor dining was first enacted.
Oh, okay. But that doesn't apply to this for Garrett Hill?
No.
Okay. And the other is existing non-conformities, and these are bolded, so I assumed that they were new, but I could be wrong. Outdoor dining shall be permitted by special exception in all other zoning districts as an accessory use on the same premises as an existing licensed, non-conforming food establishment that has indoor seating and shall be subject to the provisions of 280-115-4A. Does that apply to Garrett Hill as well?
My understanding was no, that was to the other areas, like Garrett Hill is specifically called out in the ordinance as an area, and then that section applies to other areas within the township. That's my understanding. Counselor?
Yeah, I believe that's the case. I'm quickly looking up the current code to see what it says, but that's modifying existing language there. And I, if I remember correctly, when this was discussed at the Board of Commissioners meeting that I was at, I determined that that doesn't apply here either. I think we're just cleaning up some existing language that we've noticed have problems, but doesn't apply to Garrett Hill.
Then I, can I ask why, when this is an ordinance of Radnor Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to permit limited outdoor dining facilities in the Garrett Hill-Conestoga District? Why are we talking about Planned Laboratory when we specifically have an ordinance that's dealing with Garrett Hill? That's, I'm just asking clarity. I'm not making a statement, I just don't understand it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think the, the point was that that is, the POL is part of the existing ordinance and the Garrett Hill section is being added on to that. So you see that as part of the whole, but it doesn't apply to Garrett Hill, obviously.
Come on up.
I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind, this ordinance applies not just to the existing restaurants, it, it applies to all future development. And there are large parcels in that corridor that right now, there are auto body shops that will be up for sale, probably in the not-too-distant future. And they will have the same right to outdoor dining as the existing ones do. So, so then the problem then just multiplies for us, for noise, for parking. And Hampshire Hill just sold recently, and that's a fairly large property that is connected between Garrett and both Conestoga, and the same thing can happen there. So it's not just the existing, but all future development would, would be affected by this ordinance. Thank you.
Well, again, my name is Dean Sullinger. This is the first time I'm hearing about this. Now, there are four people in my family. There are four people in my family, none of them would go for this. My neighbors on both sides, they know nothing about this, period, and they would say no to this also. I can start going down the street tomorrow and I will find a lot of people that will say no. So I, I don't know, this just seems like it's being sneaked in. So as far as viable, viable businesses up there, Garrett Hill Deli, they were in good shape and then they sold to underage people. And that, their liquor license was gone, that's why they were empty for all that time. So it was nothing to do with them not being viable. Now you have somebody come in that has a lot more stuff, they put a lot of money in there, and that's nice, but this, this changing, I mean, what's next? A Chick-fil-A and then you can have lines down the block? It's, it's, it's not, it is not a good thing. Okay, thank you very much.
Chairman, I don't feel comfortable taking any action today regarding this.
Well, Skip said we're about to get some emails too from Sean that we otherwise have not seen, so.
Can I ask a solicitor, if you table it, do they need to make a recommendation or can they, is tabling a recommendation? Because I know.
They can, they can take whatever action they want, Commissioner Farhi, no action at all. But the Board of Commissioners do not have to wait. You only have to provide them the opportunity to comment on it, but at the board, you can't be held hostage by the planning commission not taking action on it.
Okay, that was, that was my question. Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean, if you want to wait till you get those emails and then deliberate afterwards, are they allowed to do that? I know that's been done in the past.
As long as it happens at a public meeting, yes.
Oh, okay, so they would have to.
We'd have to be on the agenda, yeah, next time.
Yes, and, and if you do decide to go out in the field, make sure it's less than a quorum of you guys going out in the field or go out separately on your own. You can't have five or six of you out there together.
So, so I'll, I'll just touch on that. There was a, a meeting and it's on YouTube, it's from the township. It was done, I guess sometime around September, maybe-ish, September, August of 2021? You can watch that. I mean, that's basically a lot of, I think the, there's a lot of talk there. It's very similar. And there was also the commission, the Commissioners' meeting as well, when the business owners were here and they spoke. So there, there still is a lot on record. I have, like I said, I think it's the same, it's the same argument, it's just we have three years of COVID.
Exactly, Sean. It's just us doing due diligence, that's all.
Can I ask a quick, quick question? When Commissioner Farhi, you mentioned something that if no action, if nothing happens by the end of what year, 2023, was it something with the sunshine, basically?
It's sunset, yeah, not sunshine, it's sunsets.
So what does that mean?
So it means that they can't have outdoor dining anymore. The COVID restrictions are lifted, so it goes back to where it was.
Yep, okay.
And so they would lose any right to, to have the outdoor dining.
So from a practical standpoint, I mean, obviously, there should be a vote. So when, when is the BOC going to be taking this up? Either it's, so it's going to be voted up or voted down?
Steve, is it the seven, the next BOC meeting or is it going to go into August? Are we still waiting for Delaware County?
I'd have to check, Commissioner, see if we got comments back from the county.
Yeah, so, yeah, Mike, so it would be, it'd be in July or, or August.
Yeah, I think the worst thing that could happen is that nothing gets done. They're either one way or the other and, or in the, I think that's like the worst.
That, that's, that's my whole point. It's that these businesses have been in limbo for three years, just saying, well, go buy the cheap plastic furniture that you can lift up with your finger. Okay, so then you spend money on that. Well, then now it's three years, so you can buy a little bit better quality.
Not only that, it's basically, it's government inactivity. It's basically of a volunteer board that we're on, we're not taking any action. You have a Board of Commissioners that are not taking any action. What does that do to, what does it do to this community? What does it do to the community that you're representing from a business standpoint? I just think it's like the inactivity, I think, is just, it's just frustrating because I've been hearing about this since 2021, 2020? I can't remember, but this has been going on publicly.
Thank you.
I mean, and either, I mean, I have my own opinion about this one way or the other, but it's, the fact is, is that why is a, is a government or a government agency local, action can't be taken place? I, I just get frustrated just hearing the same debate back and forth. And going back to other people's comments, I have history in Garrett Hill. I probably have longer history than most of the people in this room. I remember when Horace P. Jerkies, there used to be a line going to Horace P. Jerkies and you're talking about parking, but guess what? Horace P. Jerkies is gone, another company took over, another restaurant took over, or probably another one, was it the Onion or whatever? But there's continuity within the, the community. And I don't think Garrett Hill is not going, Garrett Hill is way too strong for anything to upset the apple cart where, where it's not going to be around. It's, it's a wonderful community. And I just think from, I just get really frustrated just knowing the fact is that a decision where any action cannot be taken place over a fairly negotiable, or a compromise can't be achieved very, very quickly moving forward.
I'd be in favor of a, a vote up or down just on what we know so far, given what, I mean, Dave was talking about the long history and, and I, most of us are not unfamiliar with, with the issue and the board's going to do what it's going to do anyway, so.
If that's the case, I would like to read then those comments because you haven't received them. So you can see that there's two sides associated with those comments.
Yeah, I just, I go back to my point. I think we have an obligation to basically say yes or no, because we've heard this. And nothing, you know, whatever those emails, you're going to have, part of the community says yes, part of the community says no.
You know, sometimes we do the equivalent of a straw poll. So I'm, I would be more in favor of tabling it tonight because I want to see those comments. I want to see if the comments are from people who are customers of the restaurant as opposed to residents, things like that. So on a straw poll basis, if I propose a motion to table, how many people are in favor of tabling, which is different from yes and no?
Yeah, I'm.
Proposing tabling. And it's not, it's not that I don't want to take action, I just don't have the history that you do and I would like to do my due diligence.
Understood. I'm not, I'm not objecting with anyone. I am just stating my, my own personal opinion and as I said, I've been living in this community for.
Matt, before you table, I mean, I can read you those comments if you want. I can tell you the names of the residents, because they're all public record, they've all allowed it, they were all shared prior. MJ, I thought he was going to share them, I did have a conversation with him. And I'm happy to, to read some of those and, and tell you the names and the addresses where, where they are. And you will see that a lot of them live in the business district, excuse me, and then also.
I.
No, I mean, but, but before you do it, and then I'm also happy to put this up on the screen as well, so you can see the petition. Ian, if you can. I mean, so those are some of the people that also wrote letters. And the answer is overwhelmingly 41 to 3. That was again, September of 2021, as well as the petition.
I'd also.
We, we spoke about 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which was what you possibly suggested. So again, there are more emails that will definitely validate these two things, but.
I just, I would like to clarify that you, you asked people two different questions, only one of which, completely different questions, only one of which is being discussed tonight. So I just have to say that that's invalid. Like, do you like apples and do you want, or, you know, and do you want, and do you want ice cream? And you really love apples, so you say yes, but we're voting on ice cream.
There's obviously two asks in this.
Well, 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 Mike, in fairness, if you didn't like one, then the answer's no for both.
Well, if I really want my house to be bigger, much more than I don't want outdoor dining, then my answer was yes. These questions couldn't be fair, like. You're, you're absolutely right. This is right, this discussion, it should be about just outdoor dining.
All right, then, then, then instead of the poll, then there's the petition of the 17 people that live all on Garrett Avenue, that live from the Trolley Tracks to Conestoga. Those are the people that are affected.
Yeah, I can't read it either. Limited outdoor dining during which would something, something. But it's also from three years ago.
Again, yeah, it's from three, it's from three years ago. But again, to my point.
Right. So to me, I, I can't read the fine print. But to me, in the middle of COVID, there were a lot more people that might have been, like, was this forever? I don't know if it's, I don't know if they were thinking about this is forever or they're like.
No, it would say it would make it permanent. I mean, you can.
That's what it said? I can't read that.
Yes. It would make it permanent. Yes. Start if you want, then table it, but.
Just one, one, one more?
Quick.
Okay, good. Yeah. Garrett, that section of Garrett Avenue, it's a lot of student rentals. They're not homeowners for the most part. And the other thing that's really important.
Well, neither is Rick and Patty Barker. So, I mean, and they don't even live close to that. Again.
Well, I, we have a petition actually that's up to about 50 people. And it, it's for the people that are directly affected. And I can drop that off to all of you tomorrow.
Rick and Patty Barker don't, they're not directly affected.
And, and we, we're still waiting for other people to come back from vacation to add to that petition. And any petition, I mean, be aware of what the address is because it's very important. If I live five blocks from, you know, from the business district, yeah, I wouldn't mind walking to a place and maybe having a drink or something. But those are not the people that are directly affected. And as far as having a strong Garrett Hill community, I have to tell you what's happening there. And we're being fully taxed. Homes are being bought up by investors. And those investors are turning those homes into rentals. And that starts to change the whole character of our, of our community. So.
Let's not get too far astray here.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Peter?
Yes.
Can, if we wanted to, if the planning commission wanted to continue this discussion with a little more research, which we can obviously do, could we, what, how can we do that? Can we schedule another meeting, an extra meeting if, if we're interested?
Because I think we're getting. You, you can certainly vote to table it now. And you can, and say we're going to vote to table it until the August meeting. If you want to schedule a special meeting, you certainly have the right to do that also. The, the only thing you need to be aware of, as I told the Commissioner Farhi, the Board of Commissioners only needs to give you 30 days to review it. So if the board decides, no, we're, no, we're not waiting, we're going to move ahead, they could, they could possibly, I'm not saying they will or this is likely, but they do legally have the right to, after you've had 30 days to review, you, the planning commission, they can still move ahead with voting on it. But if you table it now, you can table it till August, you can table it indefinitely, you can table it to a special meeting, however the planning commission wants to go.
Does anyone else on the planning commission have a preference for moving forward?
Can I ask a question? The, is this about for or against outdoor dining? Or is it about the rules related to the outdoor dining?
The whole, the whole thing. I mean.
Or is there two votes? Like, is there a vote about for or against outdoor dining? And then let's talk about the rules that apply to that.
I, I think it's mainly for or against. The rules regarding outdoor dining are already laid out and they're not really being changed. The only thing that's being changed specifically for Garrett Hill is lessening the setbacks to neighboring residences, which they're being lessened, I think, to 50 feet, which is one of the issue with the neighbors who feel it's much too close. In other zoning districts, it's much, much further. But then again, they're much less dense. Practically speaking, if you just adopted outdoor dining for Garrett Hill, but didn't adopt the, the changes to the setbacks, no, no, no business would able, be able to do it because they couldn't meet the setbacks. So it'd almost be kind of like a Trojan horse type of deal.
So my, my suggestion would be that we table tonight and we reschedule a, a meeting on this subject only for, prior to the Board of Commissioners meeting, the next Board of Commissioners.
I was going to ask, when is the next Board of Commissioners meeting and when were we, you said we have 30 days, they have to give us 30 days. When did that start? Did that start on 5/22?
I, I do not know when you were sent this. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is a week from today.
And we wouldn't be able to advertise in order to meet before then if we wanted to, correct?
Probably not.
So Steve, what's the deal then with the BOC? Like, could, do we have to ask for them to not bring this to their agenda?
You, you certainly could make a recommendation with your tabling, make, you know, put in your minutes that your request at the Board of Commissioners, wait until you have further chance to review this and make a recommendation to them. You certainly can ask that of the Board of Commissioners. Obviously, they're not under any obligation to comply, but you certainly can make that request.
So to Dave Nat's point, if we, if we ask and are denied, we just blow it. Right? So we don't, we don't have anything to say?
Yes and no. If, you know, one could argue, and I don't know this at all, one could argue if the board just plows, plows ahead with it, they, they probably already had made up their minds to begin with. So I, I don't know if, if this is proposed for the next agenda. I don't think that agenda's been set yet. It will be a set, a day or two. But yeah, I mean, yes, it, it, the board decides to, actually, wait a second. Is it advertised, Steve?
For the board?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I'm sorry. Let me step back here. The board, even though it's been introduced, I don't think it's been officially advertised yet. The board can't adopt it until it's advertised. So if it's not advertised for next Monday, they can't adopt it next Monday. And they have to advertise it for two successive weeks before they can adopt it.
Okay, so we're good.
So you should have some time, yes.
I was also going to recommend, it's like, why can't the board take this thing up in September and allow us at least through the August meeting to put this back on the agenda?
I'll, I'll make that recommendation to, to my colleagues.
You, you will. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so.
So I'm sorry, very clearly for the minutes, what, what are we, what are you voting on?
We're making a motion to table, Steve.
To the next meeting.
Till the next meeting. And we'll address this with heads full of information at the next meeting and come up with a recommendation for the BOC.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you all very much. Thank you, Sean. So that's it. If there's, is there any other business? So the meeting is terminated. Thank you for coming.